We are right at six o'clock, so I'll call the meeting to order. And Jolene, as acting, I'm acting mayor, so Jolene, embrace yourselves, this is the first time I've done this, feel free to laugh. Jolene, can we get a roll call?
Councilmembers Erickson-
President.
Larson-
Here.
Miller-
President.
Acting Mayor Valendo-
Here. And if you are able to, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of British Justice, on a nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice
And next, for item four, it is the agenda, so we have the agenda in front of everyone. If there is a motion to approve-
I'll make a motion, approve the agenda.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's a second, any discussion? Not hearing any, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next, there's awards and presentations, which there's a planning commission appointment, and I will just read the memo. And it says, "The City of Forest Lakes Planning Commission currently has one vacancy due to the appointment of Kevin Miller to the city council. Mr. Andy Applikowski, a Forest Lake resident, has applied for an interview to fill the remaining vacancy on the commission. Planning Commission Chair Paul Gerard and Planning Commission Council Liaison Jeff Larson conducted an interview with Mr. Applikowski on June 26th, and have now moved forward a recommendation to appoint Mr. Applikowski to the Planning Commission to fill the term vacated by Kevin Miller." So with the recommendation by Chair Gerard and Councilmember Larson, it is recommended that the council move to approve the appointment of Andy Applikowski to the Planning Commission. Is there a motion?
Also move.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And then next, we have the open forum. I'll apologize in advance if I pronounce someone's name wrong. And it looks like we have two. The first is Chuck Higgins, please come up to the podium and then state your name and address.
Hello, my name is Chuck Higgins, I live at 7673 Highlow Lane North. And today I'd like to talk to you a little bit about the condition of Highlow Lane and 216th Street. If you're familiar with that, it's an oval, and that street was put in in 1987. About 1989, they came in, I don't know if it was the city or the township, and they ground off the top of the asphalt, sprayed it with tar, put down pebbles. Nothing has been done to it since. That street is all delaminating now, and big chunks are coming up. There's loose gravel everywhere. It's around the entire street, and nothing's been done in almost forty years to that street. And the thing that bothered my wife and I was that the fact that Pioneer Point got all new streets, and their streets went in seven years after our streets went in. So they got new streets, their streets weren't nearly as bad as our streets, and yet, here we sit, and our streets are chunking out. You can actually go up and pick up chunks of it, and it's all delaminated, big chunks will lift right up, and nothing's been done. So I'd like to bring it to your attention, at least. I have been up to the street department five years ago, and they looked at an overhead view of it and said, "Yeah, it's falling apart, we'll be out." I'm still waiting for them to come out and fix the street. Nobody's done it. They did come out, somebody came out and threw some cold asphalt down in a few spots, which just made things worse. They haven't really fixed anything. So I'd like to see somebody come out. If any of you'd like to come out, I'll walk you around the block, be happy to do that. I'll even come pick you up. So, that's all I had to say, and I just hope, it would like to, and Blake knows where I live, because I live right across the street from his parents. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Eugene Hurstel.
Eugene Hurstel, 10234, 204th Street North. I would just like to make some comments about, we, for pickleball, we had a pickleball pizza party, and we had pizza, and we had a real, real great time, and I'd like to thank Fire Chief personally. Alan came out, and so did Gavin Rice, and they put on a training for us. It was awesome. We had forty people show up, it was out at the courts, and he did just an excellent job, and it was free, and so it was really nice, and I really appreciate it. The whole community, pickleball community, was, you know, making all kinds of wonderful comments. And then also, Leaf came out and played some pickleball, and it went, it went pretty well until his wife started beating up on us. And I mean, she was covering everything back and forth, and too. But it went, the whole night was really special. And Alan did say one time, though, that there was a gal there that, we talked about CPR, and was it just compression, or mouth-to-mouth, and he kind of explained that. But he said that if she got in trouble and she needed mouth-to-mouth, he would give her mouth-to-mouth, but if it was Eugene, that wouldn't be. But, anyway, we had a lot of fun, and we really appreciate it. Thanks, Al.
And next, we have the consent agenda, there's items A through S.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to pull two items from the consent agenda, please. I would like to remove 7R, so we can have more discussion, and to supplement the names on the resolution, and 7Q, for further discussion.
There's a motion, and is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then we will discuss going to the regular agenda, the first item that was pulled from the consent agenda, which is the parallel parking and maintenance agreement for a pizza pub, for further discussion.
So if I could, I'd like the city to just give us a little bit more information as to where we're at exactly with this, so that we all understand clearly what is trying to happen here.
Sure. Let me just pull up a visual aid for us. Forgive me for not remembering the exact date of the meeting, but this item came before the council as a means, first was a code violation for installation of gravel in the right-of-way adjacent to 8241 North Shore Trail. In working with the adjacent landowner, the adjacent landowner made a request to the council to, that's okay, the adjacent landowner made a request to the council to permanently install improved spaces adjacent to the property, but that would be in the North Shore Trail right-of-way. At the time, staff presented the city council with two different options. One would be a parallel option, very similar to how the kind of pattern of parking has been for the last maybe eighteen months or so, and then also a parallel option. Staff had indicated that while there are less public spaces available in the parallel option, that this would be a much safer scenario along North Shore Trail. At that time, the council did discuss their favorability towards the parallel parking option, and directed staff to go forth and bring back an agreement that would solidify this. The landowner's request was twofold, one was, "Hey, can I do this?", and two, "Would you pay for half?" And at the time, this council didn't direct staff to, that you'd be favorable, but did make the suggestion that maybe the EDA would through its commercial improvement incentive program. Last week, the EDA did meet, they did consider the application from the landowner, they elected to table the request. The EDA did not want to take action on an item that was not formally approved by the council, and there were some members of the EDA, it was hard to gauge consensus, but definitely would, if a vote came to, probably a split vote of whether or not the EDA should be funding a portion of this, given the fact that it is public parking in the public right-of-way, was the argument for potential denial. EDA has not taken action. So tonight, for your consideration, is the parking installation and maintenance agreement, which would solidify the landowner's request to put this in at their expense. It does not obligate the city or the EDA to pay for half, but that if he does this, or the landowner does this, they would do it to city standards and specifications, which are included in the packet, and they would end up having to get a right-of-way permit and have a pre-construction meeting. As a reminder, this would be public parking available to anyone in the area, though we do acknowledge that it would probably predominantly be used by the restaurants, patrons. Does that help?
It does, it threw me off, because when I saw the packet information, it only showed the vertical parking, it didn't show the parallel parking, you know, it only showed the cars as we see it in the sketch here.
Well, and that's where the line is what the, would be the improvement.
Right.
Understand that Ariel still has those cars in there, and it does make it a little confusing.
What would happen with that additional space that's there?
So even though it's showing the spaces kind of right up against the fog line of the road, they actually would be pushed back a little bit farther. There wouldn't be as much green space between the existing head-in parking spaces on private property. There would be a little bit more of a buffer between the actual driving lane, the fog lane, and those parking spaces.
So like a small shoulder?
Correct.
And how would we enforce that parking, so that it doesn't end up like I see in the sketch here, where the cars park vertically?
Chief Peterson isn't here tonight, but it would be a police enforcement matter. I don't know the specific citation that would be issued, but my understanding is, police would, then, when we have the designated parking, parallel parking only, they could cite for a parking violation in that area.
Just to be clear, we've already put up signage, signs is for parallel parking only, so the signage does indicate that it's, parallel parking is the appropriate form of parking there at this point.
But of course, that's not happening. So my other question then is, is there any other areas in the city where we have parking in our right-of-way?
Anywhere like along the Highway 61 in the downtown. Again, that's not our right-of-way, that's state right-of-way.
And it's much wider.
City streets, all of our city streets would have parking as well.
They would, okay.
Yeah, and there's not a lot of room between the fog line and where you park, if you stop by Snap, or you'll park on the street there by Mallards, it's, or even in front of my office, it's pretty tight.
And again, the city's not obligated to pay for any of this, right?
Correct.
City's not obligated to pay for any of this?
No, that is correct.
That's all I have.
Any other discussion?
I'll just make a note that I wasn't for this from the start of it, of parking in the right-of-way, whether it was horizontal, or diagonal, or otherwise, due to the right-of-way, I don't think there should be parking on a right-of-way, whether they improved it or not. And as far as EDA choosing to, if they want to donate their funds to this, I don't think it's correcting a wrong to start with. I would just share that.
Yeah, to speak from the EDA's perspective, it was a split discussion, that's ultimately why we decided to table it. I mean, there's certainly some that want to see this come to fruition, are willing to put a few bucks behind it to, you know, make sure that this business, because there's been, you know, a lot of turnover out there. And I think, if I recall, based on the number of current parking spots, adds about ten percent more parking, is based on the current number of parking spots, by adding six more, you know, which at the end of the day is, is what it is. But I would like to make a motion that we approve the agreement as brought forth by staff, based on our last conversation, to enter into the agreement as it's written in the packet.
There's a motion, is there a second? I'll second. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
And it is a tie. So it-
I believe it fails for lack of approval.
Fails for lack of approval. And moving on to the next item that was pulled from the consent agenda, which is Resolution 07142508, nomination of Watershed to board member candidates.
Madam Acting Mayor, the resolution in your packet did not contain the names of candidates. At the time of publication, we did not have full confirmation that these folks were ready to put their name forward, but we now have three names that we'd like to put forward. State statute requires that if a city puts forward a list, they put forward a list of at least three people. And the reason there is that the statute kind of imagines the idea of Watershed district appointments being made in conjunction between the city and the county. So as folks know, Watershed districts are, have a ability to levy, but there's no one to vote in or out, it's vote by proxy. So you're voting for city council members and county commissioners that appoint these members, and so in order to have a direct line to both of those bodies, because Watershed affect both the town, the city and the county in general, the statute, I believe, was written in a way that allowed cities to put forward a list, and then the counties must choose from that list. So we've received a notification from the county that they're seeking nominations for this board, and if the city wishes, we have three names to put in front of you. Those names are Robert Kevin Marois, M-A-R-O-I-S, I believe that's how you pronounce Marois, Cameron Clark, and Jim Schottmuller. And those three folks, again, have, we've been in communication with, and have agreed to be put forward as candidates. And again, if the city puts that list forward, the county must choose from that list. The candidate, this, this member of the board will come from Washington County, and so these three folks live in the Watershed District and in Washington County, and within, actually within Forest Lake as well. So we believe we have a, an applicable list to put forward. So that is the update to the resolution, and I would take any other questions on the issue.
Any discussion?
Have you, have you vetted them, Mark, or do you know a little bit about them? What is their background regarding, anything to do with Watershed, or?
Yeah, I know that at least one of them, you know, lives on the lake, and has been an active member of the Watershed, excuse me, the Lake Owners Association. Quite honestly, these are names that the mayor has been in communication with a bit more than me, and I think he is comfortable with their ability to perform the job. I would say, like, much like any other commission or committee, the most important thing is, is the idea that a person's an engaged citizen, not necessarily any expertise is necessary, whether it's being on the airport commission and not knowing a whole lot about airplanes, or being on Planning Commission and not knowing a whole lot about real estate, or whatever it may be. If we get good, honest folks that are ready to make informed decisions, those are, those are good candidates, so.
Thank you.
Any other discussion, otherwise I'm looking for a motion.
Also move.
A second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
And then moving to the regular agenda, I would like to ask if it's possible to discuss the Veterans Memorial first, because the representative from the Legion just has another meeting to go to. So if we could skip to that one.
Sure.
Sure.
Okay. Ryan?
City Council?
Sorry.
Tonight, we bring forward the agenda item to approve plans and specs and authorize ad for bid for the Veterans Memorial Lakeside Park project. That project, we did plan on previously bringing in earlier, then there was just some additional discussion, we wanted to have with the Veterans Committee to make sure we had the scope of work in line with what they were expecting, and I think that was, has been resolved at the June, June meeting. And tonight, we bring forward the plans and specs that they're all in approval and support Anticipated schedule is on the cover memo, so tonight, we're looking for the approval. Plans and specs and authorize ad for bid, with anticipated bid opening August 6th. We'd bring back to the city council meeting August 11th for Consider Contract Award, and construction would start September through November, with the earliest start date Tuesday, September 2nd, so we're after the holiday weekend, and when all the activities are going on in the park. And then the work would include all the utility work, pouring the concrete footings, construction of the concrete modular block walls, completing all the concrete and unit brick paver, servicing and attaching this century structures with medallions. This center sculpture attachment will be completed at a later date, so project would be shovel-ready with all the work completed, other than the center sculpture, that would be coming at a later date. So if there's any other questions, let me know, otherwise, we're just looking for formal approval from the city council here tonight to approve plans and specs and authorize ad for bid.
And I will allow, if anyone from the Legion wants to come up and discuss it further, feel free.
We've got three of our members here, about them, Curie Lee and myself, and First Dave has been for this on a long time, too, but it's good.
It's good.
Okay, any further?
No, we worked on this really hard, and there's been a lot of tinkering with the plans, and Bolt Mike has done a great job of working with, with that group, and picking colors, and picking different pavers, and colors of granite, and all this stuff, so it was supposed to be here in June, we pushed it back a few weeks, just to make sure that they were fine with what we were doing. So the last thing we want to do is put this together with them, not being a hundred percent sure, so if that group here is in, in support of it, I think we're all in support of it.
Awesome. Any further discussion from the city council? Then I'm looking for a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept, approve the plans and specifications, authorize ad for bid.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
And just moving, not hearing any opposed, moving to item 8A, interim use permit at 508 Lake Street South, Beeswax Dispensary, and we'll, I'll hand it to Abby.
Thank you. So Beeswax Dispensary has a proposed, or requested an IUP, so an interim use permit for a retail cannabis shop located at 508 Lake Street South. This would be in the MU2 zoning district, and it is a zoning district that would allow for retail adult cannabis sales. We've checked it against all of our buffer requirements, and it is a site that is eligible for this type of use in the future. Just as a heads up to some of the councilors that may not remember, an IUP is an interim use permit, so very much like a conditional use permit. It allows the use, we can put conditions on it, but then an interim use permit also has kind of a timeframe. The reason that we approve, we initiated the code language as an interim use permit is because we're suspect that the state may change its regulations, and we didn't want to necessarily lock in any uses without the ability to monitor them, or maybe change them if the state regulations changed in the future. So this would be a completely internal change to the multi-tenant building, a completely separate unit space, not accessible from the rest of the retail space. It'll have its own entryway, it'll have security up at the front of the entrance, and right into the building. It conforms to all the standards that we've set, and the police chief has reviewed the business's plan, and doesn't find any problems with, has no concern with the use. They do meet all of the requirements for security, setbacks, parking, landscaping, security, lighting, and odor mitigation. You know, the big question with use permits is generally, does this fit, and would there be a public nuisance or detriment? And it wouldn't, it's retail use right now, and it would be a retail use in the future. On June 28th, the Planning Commission did review this, they had some questions just about the spacing between the different retail uses, they had some questions about security, but overall, the Planning Commission found that it conformed to the intent in the code, and did recommend approval with the twelve conditions. So tonight, for your consideration, oh, I should note, the Planning Commission did want the IUT, the IUT, the IUP to be valid for three years instead of five. It's, your resolution in front of you tonight is for five-year consideration. I did get an email while I was talking from our legal counsel, so she might need to pop in about whether or not this is a, we need to tweak a piece of language in here, but generally speaking, staff would recommend you move to approve Resolution 07142507 for adult cannabis IUP at 508 Lake Street South, with the twelve conditions as potentially modified by the discussion we have tonight.
Any discussion?
I'm curious what Amanda is worried about.
Thank you, Your Honor Counsel, it, it looks like it's okay, the thing, I just wanted to make sure, was that it does expire automatically on the 30th, there isn't any additional action that council has to take, that's just the end date, and it also automatically terminates upon the expiration of any licensing. So if they lose the state license for some reason, this automatically expires. I think that's important for the council, because then there isn't this sort of awkward having to bring it back to the council to decide what they're going to do with it, it's just, we're starting over, and you'll have to reapply if you want an IUP, and of course, if they've lost their license, there's probably some sort of reason behind that, and so then we have the ability to deny the application at that time. So I am good with the language that's in it.
Okay.
Maybe one thing to just clarify, and maybe legal counsel can, different from a conditional use permit, an interim use permit, as I understand it, correct me if I'm wrong, runs with the owner, and not just with the land, is that fair to say, or is it, could the ownership change, and that kind of thing?
So that, great question, and Your Honor Counsel, that is why we put this in here, this, or planned for it in the code, to set them up as IUPs, is because technically, they are a land use, but because it is tied to that specific license, you can't exchange licenses or registrations, on, actually, that's not to tell you the truth, there's some licenses that the state can exchange, but you cannot swap registrations. So in other words, if I come in as Amanda Johnson, and I get a registration for Beeswax, I can't then transfer that registration over to John for that, he has to come in and get his own. And so that is, the way that this is written is essentially, my revocat, or my registration, you know, is terminated when I'm done, and then this IUP would automatically terminate, so any new entity would need to come in and get a new IUP. That's not necessarily always true for IUPs, but that is true in how these, this particular IUP is structured.
Thanks for that clarification.
Amanda, what's the main purpose, like the commission was looking at three versus five, is there that much of a difference, or what would change that if we went with the five versus the three, or?
If, you don't mind if I can hop in?
Not at all.
I think our Planning Commission was just concerned, this is a new type of use in the community, and whether or not we would grant an entitlement to something so new, and just concerned of whether or not we'd want to pull that in a little bit, just to see how things go. Staff did mention in the meeting, and would state again here, this will be a significant capital investment for this landowner, for this business owner, not only the internal changes to the building, but just the products, the products themselves, all of the state licensing requirements, all of this is a pretty heavy lift, and so to only grant approval for one year, three years, anything kind of that or less, just makes it a little bit less desirable for a business owner. Five years gives them good, solid opportunity to run that business, and show us they can run that business lawfully, and staff would still maintain that we wouldn't change it, but the Planning Commission would, would like to make that recommendation.
Yeah, for me, I noticed that difference, your, the Planning Commission agenda, staff recommended five years, and it came to us as three years. I mean, it is a significant investment. I, I would like to give them a little bit longer runway. I mean, this body and the previous council spent a lot of time wrestling with the policy that we came up with. We had multiple meetings and workshops on it. And I think the IUP was the right route to go because it does give us as a body, you know, some control, some pathway to, to shut things down if we want to or need to. But as we start thinking about these businesses coming into our community and, you know, just the fact that it's an IUP versus a CUP is in and of itself a little bit probably concerning for a business owner who's making that capital investment. I guess I'd like to, us to consider that five-year runway just to give that, that, those businesses that are making that capital investment more runway to recoup their investment, assuming that they're running it well.
I'd agree. I think we have pretty good control of it even at a five-year versus a three-year. There's problems that the city will make the recommendation.
I agree. And I think with the fact that they also have, have to have state licensing. So there's like an extra layer of another governmental entity looking at that business. I'd be comfortable with five years as well. Any other discussion? Then I'll be looking for a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution 714-25-07 with the following 12 conditions under that permit. Special interim use permit.
A friendly amendment to make that five years versus three years?
Yes, I'm sorry. And to make that a five-year versus a three-year on the amended charge.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
And not hearing any opposed, we can move to item nine discussion. And the first one is the concept plan for Bittersweet subdivision. And Abby.
Thank you. Jaren Johnson Development has submitted an application for a concept plan review of the next phase of Bittersweet. So this would be a new single-family residential subdivision located off the kind of northern, northeast side of the lake, a forest lake in the single-family zoning district. For folks that might not be familiar, there have already been three different Bittersweet subdivisions. So we assume that this will be subdivision for, or Bittersweet fourth addition. What the proposal includes would be the subdivision into 20 detached lots, each about a half of an acre, accessed off of Hilo Avenue. Right now, the property is just under 16 acres, but we know that some of it is undevelopable. Things like steep slopes, wetlands would be removed from that acreage to help determine what that minimum density requirement is. We do have a minimum density requirement of 1.5 units per acre. And with that, we think that the development will probably meet those requirements. Right now, we're just under that. Probably pull out some of those land areas and it'll be just fine. In the 2040 comprehensive plan, this is not an area that is, that the city is contemplating parkland dedication. This does back up to Cooling Camp Park. So staff has made some recommendations for connectivity through the site. Even though there are not pedestrian facilities on Hilo Avenue, staff would propose, is proposing that the city consider a sidewalk along 232nd Street North. We'd like that moved to the north side and then sidewalk extensions on Street A and Street B. And those are going to be future roadway connections that will go all the way up to 235th? 235th in, in the long run. The other thing we'd like to see, and which is a little non-traditional, but moving that, bringing that sidewalk all the way through to the cul-de-sac and extending a trail from the cul-de-sac up to the northeast corner of the site. And that really gets us into that development to the north where we can continue those trail connectivities, but also that connectivity into Cooling Camp Park that we'd want to see. They are proposing a trail right now, just kind of cutting through to the south of the property. But we believe those topographical changes in that, there's topographical changes, challenges in that area that is really a great spot for that trail connectivity. A couple of things that have been brought up is the 600-foot maximum cul-de-sac length. As a reminder, we're going to extend, or this property is going to be accessed off of Hilo. Hilo last connects with 231st Street North, 1,600 feet away. So this is a pretty long dead-end cul-de-sac. Now, we create these where we've got that urban expansion going on, right? We're creating them over in the southwest corner right now with the Hitting Creek neighborhood. We know that future urban development is going to extend those and there will be multiple ways out in the future. One of the reasons that the city has that 600-foot concern is for public safety requirements. I have talked with, we have talked with Chief Newman, who's reviewed the development and isn't concerned with that 600-foot requirement for a couple of reasons. One, equipment is kept on every vehicle and apparatus now to be able to get through if there are blockages on a, on a roadway. The other thing is that with limited water capacity in the area, because there is no public water system out here, the region has explored and has been implementing new firefighting techniques that make it a little bit less of a concern when we have a fire or something out in a remote area like this. Planning commission brought that up as a concern, but we've talked it through and public safety is not as concerned anymore with that six, as much with that 600-foot requirement. There's future things that we still have to vet through. Stormwater, landscaping, tree preservation, all of those things would come in time. But tonight before you is the concept plan and an opportunity to provide high-level, non-binding feedback for the developer. As I mentioned, the planning commission expressed the concern for the length of road and possibly the installation of all these new well systems. However, this is the land pattern that we had guided for in our comprehensive plan. New wells were contemplated in this area and would not pose any sort of risk or issue contamination, any of that sort of stuff to the public water system. So from a staff perspective, we think the development's, you know, right where it kind of needs to be right now. Almost conforms with all of our city standards. We're going to need some more tweaks. Definitely need more information. But tonight is just any further comments you might have to offer to the developer. I don't believe a developer's representative is here though this evening.
Any questions for me?
No, I read through it. Let me look. It's very thorough analysis and, I mean, looks like a, a good opportunity, a good expansion.
I agree.
Could agree. Like I said, with the, the planning commission at first had some questions and concerns, but I think they've been addressed and thought through and talked about. So I don't see a problem with it.
Yep. Nope. I don't see anything. The trail, I guess, would be the only thing, making sure that, like Abby said, bringing out to tie in eventually with Cooling Camp would be a real plus.
It definitely would. And we also acknowledge that this hasn't gone to the Parks Commission. We have a few different concept plans that we haven't been intentionally keeping from our Parks Commission, but our Parks Commission has been so new. We kind of wanted to kind of let them get their feet underneath them. We'll be bringing this and some other ones before them in the coming months to get their feedback to make sure we're on track with what we've shared with you already. Great. I can relay those comments to the development team.
Awesome. Thanks, Abby.
Thank you.
Moving to the next one is sketch plan for Tim's Marina. And Abby again.
Thank you. Tim's Marina is located at 9080 Jewel Lane North. And tonight for your discussion is a sketch plan. Slightly different than a concept plan. A sketch plan is again, still high-level, non-binding comments. But this is usually used as a pre-application tool. The developer or the landowner knows that they'll need to move forward with the applications in the future and really wants to kind of gauge the sentiment of the planning commission and council before application submittals are made. So just to give you, I'll give you a high level of what the site is, what the proposed development scenario is. I know the landowner is here, does have some drone footage to show you of the existing conditions of the property. And then I would say it's just to help provide some feedback. So Tim's Marina is a seasonal RV site and marina that's been in existence since at least 1974. We don't actually have the original conditional use permit here in file. We just have township minutes. We also do have some minutes and at least one conditional use permit amendment from the township. So we've kind of pieced together. We know it's been around for a while. It's been amended a few times. But really, the city's permission kind of solidified. We, we, it was brought into the city when the, it was annexed into the city. That became a legal non-conforming use. Legal non-conforming uses are allowed to be maintained in the city. But in 2002, I believe it was, the DNR issued them a public waters permit. And that really kind of solidified the use here for 66 watercraft. The changes that are being proposed would be the replacement of two homes on the property, a garage, and the addition of two docks for up to 78 more boats on the property. So this is the current configuration. This is, oops, a wintertime leaf-off photo, just so you know, or a springtime leaf-off. All of the white dots that you see here, those are the boats that are brought in and stored onsite in the wintertime. This kind of gives you a better idea of the current conditions. The pink are the seasonal RV slips. And then green being some open space and parking. And then the dark gray being the boat slips themselves. We have one long finger dock, some RV dock spaces, both along the shoreline and in each of the two bays or lagoons. Along the east bay where they do the boat launching, there is seasonal mooring slips through here. So it's, I don't have a current or a springtime photo in this plan set, but know that that is on the drone footage you'll see today. There wouldn't be several land, also what's being proposed would be, oops, would be adding in two more of those finger docks or dock systems. Keeping the configuration of the other docks onsite, there might be some, there would be some removal of those seasonal RV spaces and some of those seasonal slips, boat docks as well. So this project would require several different land review processes. All marinas in the state of Minnesota are required to have an EAW before they can expand. An EAW is an environmental assessment worksheet. And that is a city-led process. That is a city application or a city process where a document that EAW has created, it gets sent out to the public, including public agencies and other interested individuals. And anybody can comment. And the idea of the EAW is what are the impacts to the environment? And how will this either mitigate or not, that there won't be any sort of adverse impacts? An EAW is also used to determine if an environmental impact statement is needed. If the EAW in, and is approved and the EAS does not need it, then the applicant could move forward with, the applicant could move forward with an application for a conditional use permit and associate, any associated variances with the development at hand. If that application process was approved by the city, then they can apply to the DNR to amend the public waters permit for additional docking. Lots of, lots of steps to get through. And so, yeah. So the slip addition, today onsite, there's 96 slips. And this would increase to 172 slips. While those in-water impacts might be less concerning, the planning commission did bring things up like turbidity. And there's been concern about maybe bumblebees and landing turtles. It's been more the concern of staff as well as the draft EAW review of the ancillary on-land impacts that adding in this many slips could create. And so just for reference, you know, anything from that seasonal storage, those, where do those boats go in the off-season? To sanitary capacity, emergency shelter. But mostly a lot of the conversation in-house with planning commission has been parking. Where do the trailers get parked and where do the users park if we now have twice as many boats on the water? Currently, the city code indicates that we need one parking space for every boat slip. Plus, we need to have employee parking and some trailer spaces. Currently, for the 66 permitted spaces, they would need slips. They would need 99 parking spaces. There's 91 onsite. So they're slightly less than conforming with the code. The code requires that 1.5 spaces. They're at 1.37. So they're just slightly under the city code requirement for the permitted amount of slips. However, there is actually 96 slips and watercraft on the site. And that means that they're at a parking ratio of just over one parking space per boat slip. Staff did include in the packet just how our code relates to other agencies that have similar parking requirements. We did look into, I don't know, half dozen or so cities, not all cities, have parking space per boat slip requirements. But on average, it comes out to about 73, 0.73 spaces per slip between White Bear, Excelsior, and Tonka Bay, who did have posted regulations. That is the exact kind of number that the applicant would be at with the proposed parking plan that they have and the proposed boat slips. One of the challenges that we've identified with the proposed parking plan is the applicant would like to keep the same surfacing material that's there today or not improve the spaces. So on the eastern property, I don't know if my shows up there. We, showing the parking spaces kind of in that angled fashion. Getting pretty close to the shoreline here, that wouldn't be permitted by code, but they would just keep that grass scenario. Can everyone see that all right? Probably can't quite see where my, my cursor is. Little crosshatch. But in this area east of the east bay, essentially just leaving that grass strip. And the planning commission did review this. There was concern over that surfacing material. There were some members that did think this should be improved parking. That would trigger watershed district, most likely trigger watershed district requirements. But the concern wasn't just about the wear and tear on the grass and maintaining that grass, but also just the impacts you could have for erosion and, and sediment or automobile fluids getting into the water in this location without having that improved surfacing there. Question has been raised by the planning commission for traffic study needed. I will say in my staff report to the planning commission, and I can't remember if I changed it, there is a, a small bypass lane and there is a right-hand turn lane for eastbound traffic. So there is opportunity for vehicles to get out of those driving lanes to get into the site. Question was raised about just the increase for gasoline sales and whether or not there'd be changes to the gasoline system there, need for storm shelters. Planning commission also raised charges about concerns or questions about SAC charges and sewer feeds and how that was addressed on a seasonal RV site like this. And then they increased accessory structures with those RV uses. I think overall, the planning commission was kind of just concerned about all that's happening there, not necessarily just with the boat slip expansion. Lastly, the other part of the application would be the removal and replacement of the two residences on the property and a garage that's associated with one of the residences. The proposal would be to replace them in kind, generally speaking. But what would end up happening would be to move them further back from the, from the right-ofways, particularly for Highway 97, which does push them closer to the water, which would also need a variance in the future. The, because the applicant is going to have to go through this environmental process and the conditional use permit and the variance process, we've asked them to identify all the things with the future developments so that we can address all of the development, future development scenario at one time to assess whether or not all those cumulative impacts is maybe too much. Generally speaking, when it comes to variances, and we can't, we're not acting on a variance, we're not making formal findings. We generally want to stay away from our environmental, you know, resources. But in this circumstance, because we do have that state highway, it might be appropriate to move that, that building further away from the roadway just for public safety, keeping it out of future right-of-way needs, those sorts of things. Overall, again, your, the intent tonight is to provide non-binding feedback to the landowner about their potential development scenario. The landowner will use this information to determine whether or not they want to move forward with their land use applications in the future. I'm going to stop. I do have this drone video that I'm happy to show you. I do know the landowner is also here if you have specific questions. Landowner also does have some just photos from the Fourth of July to share with you if you'd like to see any of that. Questions for me right now? Where to start?
Can we see the drone video and then come back to questions?
Yeah.
Yes.
I mean, if that's, yep. Hang on just one second, let me. Yeah. Yep, I just, I forgot to open it up here. That might help, actually. Joe Maslow with Tim's Marina, and he did this for the planning, planning commission. That was really helpful to kind of orientate folks to the site.
There's no music. This is north to south overview, showing the bay, the houses to the left. This is north to south as well, showing the dock on our left. And we did line the parking spaces for the Fourth of July. We were able to mark out a hundred and three parking spaces in the nine parking blocks that we've historically used. This is the drive-through, the way the cars would get to the parking spaces when using their boat. The houses on the left, restroom on the right. If you take a right that goes to the boat ramp, straight down, goes to the dock, you'll see parking on the left along the pool and playground. We have a stop sign that is more of just to recognize the one-way sign to the left. There is parking to the left. Typically, the RV site, tenants will park at their RV site. So the open nine parking blocks are for the boat users and RV guests. We're turning around, those are the lake sites on the left. The two on our left will be retired, so we will have four retired sites there where the two new docks will extend from. You'll see our grass parking on the left there. That is the most heavily used grass parking area, right near the current slip dock. These are the boats in the bay, and we have parallel parking along the left. And our hope is to maintain the look and feel as it is. So we would prefer not to be required to blacktop the roads. We prefer to keep the up-north feel. The exit is to the left. And we have parking on the left there in front of those boats on the south bay. Our launch is on the left, parking on the right. This is the east parking area. Those that are slipped on that area will use those. Otherwise, in the past, it was used for parking if we had a fishing tournament weigh-in. And now we don't do any short-term offerings like fishing tournaments or company events. And this is just a, oh, that was a south to north view. And I did take some pictures of the Fourth of July just to show that we do have plenty of parking for the increased boat slips. This is pre-Fourth of July, just showing the marked spots on the east parking area. This is our launch parking. We keep seven spots and two for Washington County, so nine total. This is still pre-Fourth of July, just showing the marked spots. This, we'll start the Fourth of July images. We did a survey, and these pictures are from one, I believe, three-thirty and six-thirty. Just showing that we do have plenty of parking. This is the launch parking area, east grass parking area, east grass parking area, east grass parking area, south bay. This will be at three-thirty PM on the Fourth. I don't know what happened there. All right, yep. So three-thirty, this is the south bay. This is the area along the pool and playground. This is south to north. This is along the playground. And playground, we have some oversized parking spaces there. And all of our marked spots are ten feet wide, just because kids. This is the parallel parking along the west side of the east bay. This is the most heavily used parking. This is going to be at our main slip dock. This is another image at our main slip dock. This is going to be six-thirty on the east parking area, six-thirty at the east parking area, same. Six-thirty, this is going to be by our launch here, the gray gravel by the east side of the property. And this is the south bay parking at six-thirty, along the pool and playground at six-thirty. And this just shows the next day, how the grass held up to the Fourth of July parking. This shows the screening to the property to our east. It looks sparse in the wintertime when the leaves are off, but it does fill out quite nicely in the summertime to screen that neighbor to our east. We do have, we did do a survey on the Fourth of July, so we do have those results here. And this just shows how the property is suited to handle the additional docks without interfering with our neighbors' sightlines. This is just photoshopped GIS image. We have neighbors to our west over here, and the, their view shouldn't get blocked. Our neighbors to the east, I mean, their view is blocked by our current slip dock. The new ones shouldn't add any more hindrance to their view. This is what it looks like currently. This is just a Google image showing lack of interference with sightlines. This is the proposed site plan, which is going to be pretty much the same as what we have. We want to add these two docks. And we're not adding parking in a sense, we're utilizing the three spots per site that we're retiring in 2026. Each site has two parking spots and a spot for an RV. So we consider that three parking spaces. And this is just the current site plan. This is a crude numbered slips. The, these two docks will replace two of the short, site shorter docks. And this is the result of our parking survey on the Fourth of July. It was a bit windy, but it was a ninety-two degree Fourth of July on a Friday. So we feel it's a pretty good gauge of our recognized parking demand. We have total cars, cars assigned to boat slips, and RV guest cars. We recognized a point four-two at three-thirty parking factor. Our current designated off-site RV parking spots are a hundred and three. We'll have a hundred and fifteen when we retire the four sites. And at a hundred and sixty-eight slips, we have a parking factor of point six-eight. If we consider the twenty slips that are RV slips that will park at their RV sites, we have a parking factor of point seven-eight, close to double what we observed on the Fourth of July. So we feel confident that we do have enough parking. And it does hold up very well to the fair weather use of, of the pontoons. This is just an overhead view of our grass parking by our main slip dock, which is going to be the most heavily used grass parking area or parking area in general that we have. The only place there is a little bit of trap rock is where we put the docks in with the tractor in the spring. So we're hoping to be able to leave the parking surfaces as they are. And the factor of point five, letting us kind of keep our current layout of parking and the parking surface so we can leave the property much as it has been for the next forty years. It has held up well for the last fifty as it, as it is. There is some concern that the lake might get busier. But we observed even on the Fourth of July, point two, point two use factor. So at any given time, twenty percent of the boats are off of the dock. And that matches with our two boats, our two cars per boat used brings us to a point four parking factor. So adding seventy-two pontoon slips would likely see fourteen to fifteen more pontoons on the lake on any given weekend. They're not wake boats and jet skis. I, we feel strongly that it's not going to be noticed as far as making the lake busier. We went through our parking factor. I know many cities are concerned about parking from their marinas, but they're also downtown where there's restaurants and shopping and beaches and carnivals and all this other demand. And I think our parking survey on the Fourth of July showed we don't have all of that. We don't need as much parking as downtown. In downtown, I would assume, we were here. I would assume parking was difficult on the Fourth of July in downtown Forest Lake. But we don't want to take any more of the public parking demand. But I think we can more than accommodate the parking demand that would result from two more slip docks. And over the years, we have done more short-term. We've hosted bass tournaments, the weigh-ins, our company events. And in, in past years, we have ceased hosting those just because it creates an influx in a short time when all the bass boats come in and you get spectators. So we've, we've kind of ceased all our short-term offerings in favor of seasonal boat slips, seasonal RV slips. It's just more consistent and less demand for parking. Yeah, I think that's, that's our speech. I can answer any questions or concerns, and all are welcome as we work through the, the process here.
Any questions?
Maybe one. So how was it on Friday night at sundown? When, I mean, I live on the lake and you can almost walk across the lake on pontoons, so.
Everyone goes home. I mean, six-thirty is, if they're not there at six-thirty, they're not coming. So that's why we did our parking survey. If you live on the lake, nobody uses it before noon. So we did one-thirty, that's going to be the people that come at noon. Three-thirty is going to be the busiest time. You get the people that come at one o'clock, some come at two. And then by six-thirty, even on the Fourth of July, a ninety-two degree Fourth of July on a Friday, our parking numbers came down a little bit.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions?
How many permitted spots do you have right now?
So there is some confusion there. We reached out to the DNR. In the past, we would distinguish between RV site boats and general boat slips and rental boats. So right now, we have ninety-six, and we reached out because sixty-six is what they show.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions?
I guess as far as, you know, the site plan and the parking, I'm generally in favor of it. You know, it's, I can appreciate that there's maybe a lot of concern from planning, but, you know, one has to look at what's being asked, not maybe what decisions have been made over the last fifty years. I mean, I've been out on the lake, I was out on the lake on the second, the third, the fourth. You know, the third was maybe, you know, arguably a little busy on First Lake, people were zipping around. There wasn't any, you know, obviously it rained on the, on the fifth, but that evening it was, it was quiet. You know, living in the bay, I can see there's, you know, your point two is probably about right in terms of how many of my neighbors actually go out, you know, besides the Fourth of July. So I guess personally, you know, I'm not terribly concerned about how much busier it's going to make it just because I, I know how often pontoons get used while they sit in the water all summer. As far as parking is concerned, so how, that east side parking that you've shown is going to, you know, be intended to accommodate this potential influx. You've been using that for years in that, in that fashion? Or is it just been winter storage space?
So in the winter, it's for boats. In the summer, in the past, we used to have more parking demand. We'd have, if we can, if I can bring up the image, or I can just go through it. So typically, boat slip users are going to park right in this area and along the west side of the east bay in that parallel fashion. The area by the pool would typically be used by rental boats in the past. We don't do rental anymore. And then the east parking area would be for bass tournament weigh-ins. And then those that have a boat slip on the east side of the east bay. On the Fourth of July, it will be more used with two additional docks. We have, I did write the factor down. I believe on a, assuming a .42 usage rate. So we have 54 spots on the west side, 61 spots on the east side of the property. And I believe 70 is a .4 parking factor. So there would likely be 10 cars in that east grass parking area out of 39. So a quarter used. If it's a busier Fourth of July, it'll be more used. But grass does hold up well if it's not muddy, you know. And even the most heavily used grass parking area that we have by the ramp or by the current slip dock, we don't observe that. You know, by the, it drains well. By the time it gets done raining and people come to use their boats, it's perfectly fine. It's not, I know there are images. If they have a concert or something and people bring RVs in grass parking and it rains and they're there, and we just don't observe that. We're not a destination more than we are, I don't live on a lake or the lake. I want my boat easy to use and it's 10 minutes away. Or in the case of those that live in headwaters, it's five minutes away. For the long term of Forest Lake, maybe somebody buys that house in headwaters because they can keep their boats five minutes away. So we feel like an amenity.
You mentioned that it wasn't going to be wave boats or jet skis. Are you going to limit it to pontoon boats?
Yeah, pontoons, maybe small fishing boats. If you live on the lake, you know Forest Lake's a shallow lake. So the depth will make that a reality combined with the fact that most of our waitlist demand is from those with pontoons.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
All for now.
Mr. Manslow, Manslow, is it?
Yep.
Couple of questions I have. Can you tell me, how many current campsite slips do you have right now?
Yep, so we have 30.
And when I'm reading the documents of permitting, you're allowed nine?
It should be 30. From what document? It should be, I think it was 32 in the past, 32 RV sites.
Well, I'm just talking about your campsite slips. The information I read in the document here says you are allowed nine. Is that not correct?
I'm not...
Abby, am I missing something?
I'm not aware of that. I know we're 32 RV sites. We utilize 30, and next year we'll utilize 26. That might be the number of docks on the shore behind RV sites. There used to be nine lakeside RV sites. So nine might be the number of docks.
Yeah, I think...
RV docks.
That might be a little bit better. So it's 16 mooring spaces in the harbor where the...
16 mooring spaces. So how many currently mooring spaces do you have?
Yep, so we have 96 boat slips currently. And there was some, we did reach out to the DNR for clarification. We used to distinguish 30 RV site boat slips, 50 general boat slips, and 16 rental boat slips.
Is that correct, Abby? The information I read in the packet seems to be different than what he's telling us.
So the DNR permit is for 66 watercraft?
66, that's what the current DNR permit is for. And you currently have how many?
96.
How did that happen?
We did, so we always considered 30 RV site boat slips, 50 general slips, and 16 boat rental boat spots. So we're assuming that the RV site boat slips were neglected in that count. But we did reach out to Dan for clarification.
Have we got clarification back yet?
No.
Right, because so right now, it's zoned for, you have permit for 66?
Yep.
And you have 96?
Yes, yep.
Okay, and you want to go to 172?
168. We would be adding 72.
76, according to the math that I added up here, 38?
Yep.
Slips on two docks?
Yep.
That's 76.
Yep. Those two docks would replace two of the shore docks there. They would leave from the same place. So those two boats would then go on to that main slip dock. So each new dock would have 36, and then the two that are current would be there. So each dock would have 38 boats on it, but they would add 36 per.
Because you're subtracting some.
Yeah, yep.
Okay.
Yep.
And has the DNR given you any indication whether they think this is a good idea or they would approve something like that?
They haven't. They told us to go through the process, and right now, we're trying to gauge whether the city would be amenable to letting us keep our parking surface as it is because if they require asphalt, it changes our plan.
And that brings me to that question is, Abby, what is our zoning here?
Single-family.
I like, you know, you talking about the up north feel, but my concern is the contaminants that get into this water with not having a solid surface.
And I know the concern, and we don't notice, I mean, we have our, the grass parking, and it, even with a wet June, we haven't noticed it being ripped up.
Your docks that you're talking about putting in, they seem to be right in the middle of a whole bunch of lily pads and weeds out there.
Yep, so we did reach out to Dan about that as well. The west dock would be in a lily pad patch.
And how would you deal with that?
If we put the dock in, we wouldn't have to pull the lily pads, but it might affect their growth. So we did reach out to Dan to see if that just throws out the plan or if there is a way around that.
Because I don't think you can just pull them out.
Yeah, and we wouldn't plan to pull them out. They would just grow around the boats.
Okay, thanks.
Yep, thank you.
Madam Secretary of State, may I?
Yep.
It seems the plan does not require a lot of infrastructure investment on your part. Would you be opposed to some sort of phasing plan that would allow adding 20 docks a year to slowly gauge whether or not the parking is becoming a problem rather than adding 172, having a disaster and having to tell people they can no longer have a slip the next year? Is there any reason that, any reason that we couldn't phase this in over a number of years?
Yep, so the, we hope to just go through the EAW process once. So we're hoping to, you know, get permission. And we would be fine with phasing it in, but we would like, I'm not sure how that works with the EAW. It's our understanding is you express everything that you want to do and get the okay from all the other agencies. But in the conditional use permit, we would be okay with a phase in and annual review. We're used to meeting 10 new people a year. 40 the first year or 50 the first year would probably be plenty. And the next year, phase the rest in.
Can you explain, you have a number of RVs? There's no additional RV spots proposed with this plan, correct?
Nope, we're retiring four of the lakeside RV sites for placement of the new docks.
And do you currently have an RV dump site for waste disposal on site?
All the RVs are, sites are city sewer.
Dave, do you have any comments on that?
So about a couple of years ago, we found that they had a attachment into our city sewer, and they had an RV hookup just dumping straight into the sewer. Currently, they're paying just residential flat rate of $133 a month or a quarter. So they're not, they'll be have to be a SAC determination of all the RVs and the boats and everything that are using this marina. So as of last quarter, they're paying as like a, as a residential house.
So we do have, so we pay for 90-60 and 90-80, and then we pay, I think it's 1,500 a quarter for the RV park. So we get three bills each quarter.
Yep.
I can't remember, it used to be six, it might be eight a year now. It might be closer to two grand a quarter.
Regardless, there needs to be probably some upgrades to that place. That's an actual RV dump station versus direct, you know, direct drive into the sanitary. Right now, it just kind of goes into the system.
Also, can I just clarify? You said that all of the RVs are connected to the sewer system?
Yep, so the house, the old dump station is in the center of the road by the, to the west of the main house, or to the east of the main house by our stoplight. That one is where the house goes in. And the, there's a six-inch main for the RV park. And that was put in in the 89 or 90, I believe.
I just, but the actual RV units are not connected to, by pipe, to the piped city system?
Yep, so, and I forget what their calculation was. I think they charge three RVs as one house.
Sure. I do think that some of these things, changes that have occurred over time would probably also need to just be a part of that EAW or through the use permitting process to kind of really help everyone kind of lock in what historically has been happening, what are the onsite conditions, and then that expansion. Those are some of those things we hadn't kind of gotten into thus far, but I think staff can definitely work with Joe and his team on identifying some of those other items, those, again, those on-land concerns that kind of pop up like this, that hadn't been vetted yet.
That's all I had, Madam Mayor, thank you.
Yeah, I'm generally favorable to these changes. I think with all of this, I mean, you can see with the discussion happening that items are popping up where there's questions. And I think through the discussion, we can dive into those more and then figure out just historically what's happened. And then, I think, hopefully move in a positive direction. And then Councilmember Larson, did you have any comments?
I kind of, in the same boat as Councilmember Miller, a little bit concerned about some of the parking and stuff like that. And I know you made your discussion at the Planning Commission meeting, which I was there for. And the EAW thing, you want to try to do it all in one deal because it does get expensive. I think going from 96 to 172 is maybe just a little bit of a stretch in that area.
We would be okay in a conditional use permit to phase it in.
That's a thought. Thank you again for your time, Joe.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think the idea of phasing it in, if it's possible to do the EAW with it all at once, and then if we can do the phasing in, if that makes sense.
The EAW has to be done all at once. If he expands at any point. So if Joe wanted to add 10 boat slips, he'd have to do a full EAW. He wants to do 168 additional, he has to do an EAW. So the idea was, let's put all of it together at once. Just because the EAW says yes or no environmental impacts doesn't necessarily mean the conditional use permit that we can find that it isn't, that's in, you know, life, health, safety, public, not a public nuisance. All of those kind of findings we have to make with use permits. But it's good feedback to at least hear that there is some concern from some of the council members about the volume of the addition because that is, I think, has been a concern that we, staff has expressed as well.
Certainly, the strategy with an EAW is to look at the maximum impact. And then, you know, the council and Planning Commission have, there's no need for them to say, well, the EAW said everything's okay, therefore, everything's okay. You still have all the zoning issues that go along with it that the EAW does not, is not there to address, right? The EAW's environmental, environmental impacts. And so certainly common to see an EAW with the maximum scope and then a scope that moves forward is less than that, so.
Can I ask one last question?
Yep.
Would you have any priority on those boat slips for residents versus non-residents?
I mean, typically, they're going to be, you know, within, we did a survey, just looked at our mailing list. I mean, maybe we could give a discount to Forest Lake residents the first year. But right now, we have 34% are Forest Lake residents. 42% are within seven miles. 54% are within 10 miles, and 80% are within 17 and a half miles. So about half are in Forest Lake or within a few miles of Forest Lake.
Just curious.
Yep. I mean, I don't know if we can play favorites, but I would imagine we don't advertise open slips, so we should be able to accommodate Forest Lake residents that first year.
And this may have already been discussed, but does the EAW taken a consideration? Is that just for the environmental impacts for the boat slips addition? Or is it literally everything, like parking included too?
It's going to be for everything. So the trigger is the boat slip addition. But the EAW is looking at all of the environmental impacts that the boat slips and that marina expansion is creating. And so if every slip is requiring more parking, then that parking is a part of it. EAWs also have certain components that have to be addressed, like greenhouse gas emissions and things like that. So there's factors that are, that will be factors of the EAW that are driven because of the proposal. And then there'll be factors that are driven because of the statutory requirements for an EAW.
Okay.
Quick question. Is it your intention that these additional boat slips, that you would provide onsite trailer parking in for these boats as well?
So we do have a trailer storage area that's pretty full. So the same as winter storage, we are as full as we want to be. So our intention is to do legacy storage because we do store some of our lake neighbors as well. So if we add the docks in 2026, when we send our fall letters out, we will offer it to those that stored with us in 2025. We assume the boats, the new boats that would be slipped exist and were stored somewhere for that last season. And our intention would be they would just be stored off-site where they have in the past.
In the summer or winter?
In the winter for winter storage and the same for summer trailer storage.
Summer trailer would be off-site. Okay, thank you.
Any other comments, questions? Not, not hearing or seeing any, then thank you for coming up and showing us and having the video and pictures were very helpful. And then we'll move on to staff updates.
All right, thank you, council, thank you, Abby.
Thank you. So I'll start with Ryan.
Mayor City Council, I want to provide an update.
Mayor City Council, I want to provide an update on the MinDOT Roundabout striping, restriping contract that's been awarded and, and moving forward, which is planned to begin at three locations. They did have five, but they don't have enough funding to do all five. So they're moving forward with the three locations beginning July twenty-eighth. First location is planned at Down and Hugo at the intersection of sixty-one and one hundred and seventieth. That's anticipated to take a one night. Then they're going to bounce up to Forest Lake and begin on potentially July twenty-ninth at the intersection of Highway ninety-seven and Goodview. They're anticipating that to take one night, maybe two. And then depending on how they get through that, then they're going to then finalize their schedule for the restriping at the roundabout in the downtown area on Trunk Highway sixty-one at Broadway. That's anticipated to take three nights. The closures will be from eight PM to five AM. And they know with the downtown one, they're not allowed to start on a Tuesday night because of the arts in the park. There will be a fourteen-day variable message sign set up to provide the advance warning of the project. But just want you to know, these three restriping contract projects are, are coming through, completed by the state of Minnesota. The other two roundabouts that they didn't have enough funding for that might come at a later date, separate funding of the sixty-one ninety-seven. So heads up on that. I've been requesting specific information that we can put on our websites. There's just been a handful of people involved in this from MinDOTs and trying to get the right stuff. And yeah, creates, and then just even last week, they did some in-the-field meetings to look at it, to verify their schedules too. So they're kind of dialing some stuff in for sure on that, especially when we get to the downtown one. And then tonight, we held a, seen most of you guys upstairs, but the public open house for Erika Avenue Street Improvement Project. That was very well attended and very positive feedback. So that will continue to move forward in the process. And next step would be coming back to you guys to approve plans and specs and authorize ad for bid for that one once we get some other final approval stuff and have that project ready. Other thing, that's some conversation going on in staging with the Highway ninety-seven project. It's anticipated that Highway ninety-seven will be opened from Highway sixty-one to Everton Avenue by mid-August. So that'll provide traffic to be able to get in there. They'll still have Highway ninety-seven closed from Everton to where the Hornsby intersection is. So kind of some movement forward on that. And then just North Shore Trail, there's been some emails. Some residents aren't attached probably to the mailing lists or the updates or contacting the field inspector or looking at the updates that are on the website. But all the road closures have been well planned out. Nothing has been done or completed by surprise. There's well-advanced signage, road closed ahead, and another road barrier before you get into it. We are, though, finding a significant amount of traffic that is ignoring the signage and just trying to drive through the project. And, you know, we're trying to deal with that accordingly. But, and then I think some out of frustration, then there's some emails that are coming back forward to probably city staff that's getting that stuff. And then we're following up with that. But nothing's been unplanned at this point. If people are talking and you have the ability to interact with them, just make sure they're signed up for the, all the updates that are happening. Sometimes it's two, three times a week that an update might be going out. The QR code that's on the project website page on the city's website, all that information there. Flyers have been handed out with the construction inspectors. Name and number and contact info. We're following the staging of the plan as previously discussed with everyone. So it's just a large project, not a lot of ins and outs. And, you know, I did it this morning. I thought I was going to be late for something we had going on in town. And I saw accidents on the main corridors and I tried taking some backroads. And I'm like, nah, this got to be open up there, right? Now, I got up to the road closure up in Zimmerman and I had to turn around too. So I'm guilty of it too. But that's just kind of the stuff that we've been dealing with. Just kind of wanted to bring up some of that stuff so you know that we obviously are aware of it, are trying to deal with it, and some of the other things going on with other projects. So with that, I'll open up with any questions you might have.
Can you speak to that intersection that was called out in open forum tonight? Is that a area of-
Hilo.
Hilo, yeah.
I'm going to throw a dart at that part of town and then we just pick what road to go to next? I mean, we, we do-
I know, I know that's some subsequence, so.
We do a road rating map every year. Coordinate with Public Works on where, you know, projects are going in the future. And that road is still scored well or higher than roads to the west and east of them, so.
Thank you.
Yeah. I did look that up tonight, so I'm not just winging that answer, right?
I figured you did, that's why I asked.
Do you know what year it's scheduled for?
It's not in the ten years.
Okay.
With current funding, it's not in the ten-year capital improvement plan.
Okay. If there's no other questions, Jolene?
No updates this evening.
And Abby?
Just a few. We are doing interviews for the Assistant Community Development Director position. Hope, uh, we might have a candidate selected by the end of the week. Additionally, I am meeting in the upcoming weeks with the county, two different separate meetings. One is to talk about the local affordable housing aid. Reminder that there's a metro area tax for affordable housing. We talked about it last fall, kind of got some direction from Planning Commission, EDA, and council. So I'll be working with the ED, the county CDA on potentially developing an agreement for your consideration for to, for them to administer the use of our funds in Forest Lake. And then also meeting with the county who wants to talk about expansion, potential expansion of our local bus circulator program and what kind of needs there might be. So if I, any of you have any thoughts on the bus circulator program or that affordable housing aid, feel free to reach out to me. And then also, though we have not determined it complete, I am really excited to announce that we did receive a, like, application for preliminary plant of the second phase of Chestnut Creek, only fifteen years later, I think. Developer that is looking to develop the site has been working with the watershed to rectify some of the issues that really took a long time for us to figure out. So it's really exciting to kind of maybe see that second half of that neighborhood get completed in the next couple of years, so. Other than that, I don't have any other updates.
With no questions, we'll move to Dave.
I missed open forum, so I don't know who attended. But I, I spoke to some people out on Hilo as well. And I told them the, the good news was that they're rated a five or a six. But the bad news is that there's about fifty miles of roads that are rated in that. So at our clip, we're doing three to four miles a year. So it's, it's trying to group stuff together. Ryan's point that we're, we can't do a one-off in one area to try to group stuff. So I, I'll try to follow up or if I can figure out that guy's name and call him back as well. Just want to thank everybody for Fourth of July. It's the fourteenth, it's been ten days from now. But Police, Fire, Public Works all did a great job, I think, getting everything done for the fourth. Didn't really have much of a hitch there and everything kind of went out, kind of went well, so. No other updates, any of any questions for me?
Seeing none, Chief Newman?
No updates.
And Amanda?
Yes, so just a quick update on the outstanding four sixty-three actions. If you recall, we have one on Johnson Avenue. I'll talk about that one last. And then we have two others that the council approved back in April for one on Seventeenth Street and one on Everton. The two actions on, the action for Everton and Seventeenth Street, they had until today to demolish their buildings. And they did not do so. So those are both being filed with the court to get default motions on. Nobody responded to those. One of those, the property owners cannot be found. It was, we noticed them by publication because they obviously were not living at the property. They were also not residing at the address provided by the tax records, which was like someplace in St. Paul. So there's that one. And there's another property where the individual also does not reside there. Claimed to be trying to find somebody to come out and do the demolition work, but it was not done. So in any event, both of those are moving forward with the court actions. Johnson Avenue property, that one is still in process of a settlement agreement with the bank. If you recall, to allow them the ability to, to get into the property. That's a little bit more nuanced. That one's taking longer than I am sure all of you would like. It's taking longer than staff would like or I would like. But trying to do that in a cost-effective manner, which would not include full-blown litigation for the city. So that one, but that one is, you know, moving forward as well. Available for questions if you have any.
No questions that I'm seeing, Mark?
I just want to thank everyone for allowing us to make the hire on our finance record. We're happy to extend an offer to Ellie Larkin. And we'll be in touch with her and hopefully welcoming her to our team.
Yeah, that's very exciting. See no comments or questions? Then we'll move to mayor and council updates. And we'll start with Councilmember Miller.
Just a couple of things. Dave, I'd like to just say from a citizen standpoint, I was amazed at how well the Fourth of July went and how well all of the public works and everything got taken care of. The streets were as clean as I could ever have dreamt of, not even twenty-four hours after that event. So the signage, everything was down. It was absolutely amazing. I drove through and I'm like, wow, did we just have a parade here in the carnival? And I couldn't believe it. It was, it was very, very well done, so thank you. I attended the longest meeting in my career so far. I went to the school board meeting a couple of weeks ago. I spent seven hours at that meeting. And one of the major issues that they were addressing was sent back for a rediscussion and they still haven't decided on the result yet. So maybe this week, we'll hear more on that. That's all I have.
Thank you. And then Councilmember Erickson?
Yeah, I'd also like to thank Public Works and the police force for just a fantastic Fourth of July. It was, it was awesome, so well done. No other updates tonight.
Thank you. And Councilmember Larson?
Uh, just have one thing here. I got a card that was addressed to myself as well as the council. And I'd like to just read it real quick. Forest Lake City Council, thank you for the beautiful pot of flowers for my retirement. It's gorgeous and a great addition to our deck. I enjoyed my twenty-two years with the police department, but the time has come to move on and I'm enjoying it. Thank you again and all the best to the city of Forest Lake. Lynn Gort.
Very nice.
Thank you.
Thanks. And then for my updates, just wanted to say that I attended the open house earlier today. And then a couple of weeks ago, I attended the cable commission meeting, which we just discussed, like, our budget. We discussed the audit and things like that. And then I'm officially back from my maternity leave, so yay. And this is the longest I've been away from my baby. So I've been thinking about him, can't wait to get back. Hopefully, things went well, fingers crossed. And then thanks, everyone, for bearing with me today as acting mayor. And just wanted to echo for everyone else, thanks to staff for everything that they did for the Fourth of July. That is not an easy task and it's multiple days. So thanks for the hard work that they all put in and the overtime for that. And then with that, with nothing else on the agenda, we can adjourn.